Welcome, everyone, to this planning commission. The date is Monday, November 25th. Well, everyone, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May be seated. First item for tonight is actual approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone need to make any changes? A motion?
Second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. The next item is the approval for the minutes for the October 28th, 2013 meeting. Did anyone need to have any changes? Yes, go ahead, please.
On page three, in the first paragraph, well, actually, it's the second paragraph, Ellis addressed key issues. At the very end of that paragraph, there was a phrase, "It would preserve more right-of-way." It's more appropriately known as "right-of-way," a hyphenated word, so I thought "of" would preserve more of the right-of-way. And then on page four, in the fourth paragraph, starting with Sheriff Stoltz asked, in the second sentence, it refers to me as having asked about the loss of the riders if the station was not included in the LRT plan, and it was actually Commissioner Egan who raised that question.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or concerns?
No.
Okay. Did you get all those, Julie? Okay. Very good. So, approval of the minutes. Anyone have any attention? Do I need a...I need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2013 meeting with those corrections.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain.
Very good. Moving on, the next one is for tonight is actual public hearings. The first one is entitled Bluff West 13 Edition. The location of the project is 11480 Riverview Road. The request is for preliminary plat of 1.33 acres into four lots. With that being said, with the proponent of the project, please come forward and tell us a little bit about your project, please. We also state your name, spell your last name, and your address for city records.
Certainly. Thank you. Ben Wickstrum with Lake West Development, which is 15545 Highway 7 in Minnetonka Suite 335.
Okay.
Last name is W.I.K.S.T.R.O.M.
Sheriff Stoltz, members of the commission, thank you for hearing us tonight. Pretty simple subdivision, four lots. We worked with city staff to make sure that this meets all the zoning requirements. We had one redraw, and we think we've accomplished that. Meets the goals of the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan requirements. I can answer any questions that you have.
We'll come up with some later, perhaps. Do you have anything else to add before we move on to city staff?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Franson, can you take us through the staff report, please?
Actually, I'll take a stab at it.
Oh, great. Very good. Thank you.
The plan as presented does comply with the zoning ordinance as well as the comprehensive plan, and staff does recommend approval.
Great. Thank you very much. Seeing that this is an open hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns before we move forward? Yes, sir, will you please come forward?
State...
Yep, absolutely. State your names, spell your last name for us, and tell us your concerns.
My name is Chet Baker, B.A.K.E.R. I live at 11544 Landing Road, and I just wanted to go through some of the concerns. I've also addressed them in a handout that I gave to the staff.
Mr. Baker, so this is your handout you have? Does everyone have a copy of that, just for reference?
Yes.
Okay.
As you know, the site to be developed is 11480. My property is actually 11544 Landing, which is across Riverview Road from the site.
Mr. Baker, if you can grab that microphone in front of you and just kind of lean into a little bit, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here's an aerial view of the development site. And again, my home is located to the south of the development site. This is a view of my home from Riverview Road looking south. It would be from the site looking south across Riverview Road. And also, another lot that I'll be talking about tonight is adjacent to my lot. This is to the east, and it would be to the southeast of the development site. This is the view looking up at 11480 currently. As you can tell, it's a pretty wide, wide-open view, not a lot of impact visually. This is a view from my dining room looking at 11480, and as you can tell by the orange arrow, that's all that's visible of the current brown homestead. This is a current house bordering immediately to the west of my lot. The reason I'm showing these is just to kind of give you a feel for the surrounding area adjacent to my lot. And this is the current undeveloped lot bordering Landing Road to the east, bordering my lot to the east. It stretches pretty much from the side of the house going in. I believe it's about 15 to 20 feet, and then up. And then here's a view of the brown homestead with, just to kind of give you an idea of the current setback, which is roughly about 51 feet. And I want to...my concern tonight is the amount of homes on the property. It's not development. I realize that the property needs to be developed, and I'm fine with that. I just feel that it's a higher density than it should be. And I want to just quickly address a similar development that Lake West did. It's called Park Valley Estates in Minnetonka. And you've all got this, so I'll just kind of summarize it. Lake Development proposed a high-density development, 10 home sites on roughly about three acres. It was Minnetonka Boulevard east of 494. That would have allotted .29 acres per home. After Minnetonka citizens voiced their concern, Lake West dropped it first down to nine and then down to eight homes, which increased it to .37 acres per home. And ultimately, the Minnetonka City Council requested that they reduce it further to five homes, which bumped it up to .59 acres per home. And as of September 13th of this year, the Park Valley Estates density is at six lots at .49 acres per home, and it's...the grading is scheduled to start in October. Reason I'm bringing that up is that I feel the development of 11408 should not be weighted solely in favor of Lake West. The current project proposal creates hardships for me while favoring Lake West development. I feel a win-win for myself and Lake West would be two homes instead of the current four. And I would like to recognize that Lake West has made density development...density adjustments when called upon to do so by the Minnetonka City Council. My big concerns on this, and I'll briefly go through these, the current setback of the existing house at 11480 is approximately 51 feet. The proposed setbacks are at the city minimum of 30 feet. That would mean that the new homes would be 21...21 feet closer to Riverview and thereby more visible to me. Security lights, the current light on the brown home is visible at night. It's not overly obnoxious or anything, but it is visible. If the setback is closer to Riverview Road, security lights visibility on my property would greatly increase. The current development plan has three homes with garages facing Riverview. My third concern is the density of the development. Currently, I'm bordered by four homes. The new addition would add three after tearing down the existing brown home. And then there's also a lot immediately to the east of my property. If that's also developed, then I'll be surrounded by seven homes, five of which would be at higher elevations than my own. And the average in this area is three to four. I'm bearing the greatest burden of encroachment by this in this area, and to match neighboring homeowner density burden, I would like to see Bluff West's addition reduced to two homes. I inquired about and was told at the time of the purchase of my home that the lot to the east was not going...was not buildable. And then last spring, it went onto the market. My fourth concern is smoke from outdoor fire pits. It tends to...my home is at a lower elevation, and as a result, smoke tends to pool from fire pits and fireplaces. And the addition of four homes at 11480 and potentially another on the lot adjacent greatly increases the potential of smoke from these sources. At present, the smoke requires me to close my windows and turn on the air conditioning in the summer, and that degrades quality of life and increases my electrical costs as a result. And probably the biggest concern I have is the loss of home value and loss of saleability of my property. Development of three homes at 11480 and one on the adjacent lot to the east will create a feeling of being in a pit because my home sits at a lower elevation than all of them when dining or sitting on the outdoor deck. I feel this would not be a positive. When I put my home on the market, it's impossible to determine what the real estate market's going to be in the coming years. If current buyer trends continue, potential buyers will be more selective in what they're looking for, and if a home has a larger number of homes encircling it, I feel that's a negative. My home is my investment, and like any homeowner, I don't want it to lose value, and especially not because of development solely weighted towards a developer. My last page is what I feel would be good faith efforts I would like to see from Lake West going forward. Deeper setbacks from Riverview Road than required by the city to match the existing setback of 51 feet. Less density, two homes would be preferable instead of four. Security lighting placed in a manner that's not visible from my home. Gas fireplaces instead of wood burning. Architectural style and materials consistent with existing homes. That no trees on my property bordering Riverview would be disturbed or removed in the process of development. To minimize noise, dust, and disruption during construction. And an earnest and ongoing effort by the developer to work with me to address my current concerns during the planning and construction process. The last several pages that I included on the packet are the case study of the Park West developments. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Appreciate your time. Julie, I just want to ask one question. So, this is zone for R-113.5, right? And that's not changing, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay. Can the proponent come forward and at least answer? I don't know if you...have you seen this packet before tonight by chance?
Sheriff Stoltz, I haven't seen that.
Okay. Do you have a copy of it? Great. There's one. He's just provided one for you.
Thank you.
Some of these, I'm guessing you might be able to answer and help with. I wish that they were...I guess go to the last page where it says, "Good faith efforts." I would like from Lake West. It's about the third page from the back there. Why don't you take a look at that? I'll give you a minute to kind of read them and see if maybe you can address any of those issues, and maybe we can resolve some of these issues tonight. While you're doing that, too, commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns about this? I'm not seeing any. Okay. City staff have any concerns?
You know, this...I've been here for 30 years, almost, I mean, in January, and I've seen this entire area develop. It's a mix of different lot size and zoning districts, and a lot of that was determined by the builder-developer for the type of house that they were trying to build in the community. Most of the brown farm, which is kind of like a lot of the city, was developed in phases. Orrin Thompson did a big block of it back in the '70s, and you can see the size of the houses and the values that were built at that time. When you get to the south side of the road, you got more into the custom builders. Mr. Baker lives in a development, I think it's called The Landing, and that was developed by Wally and Ruth and Beth Houston. And that had to be kind of a customized design with large lots because they had to bring the road down to the bottom. They were dealing with steep slopes and floodplains and wetlands and trees, and so the lot sizes in that development had to be a little bit bigger because of the topography, and also needed to be a little bit larger because that was the type of product that the Houston's wanted to build in that location. Slightly larger lot, slightly larger houses. I'm going to make the assumption they had some architectural control within the development with that. Land a lot of trees turned out to be a very nice neighborhood. The site that we're looking at today was zoned back in the late '70s. It's just that Mr. Brown wanted to live there, wasn't planning on moving on, didn't want to have his property platted at the time, and so he kept it in one large lot. And because there is a zoning status of R-113.5, no matter what developer comes in to develop that property, if they develop a conforming project, meaning it meets the lot size, the setbacks, and the dimensional requirements, the city has an obligation to approve that project. The city can't say it should be three lots, or one lot, or no lots because there's a legal entitlement that goes with that. Some of the items that are on this page would be items in the discretionary category. If the developer chose to do those things, they could. But I don't believe that we have the authority as a city to require a certain architectural style or the gas fireplaces. The thing that we can do to try to customize a little bit is be a little bit more sensitive to the views and look at perhaps rearranging some of the tree replacements. So, maybe it's along Riverview Road. I think the plan they have is kind of spread out per lot, but that would be the area where our commission and council might have a little bit of flexibility and maybe making that edge, you know, a little bit nicer as soon as the houses were put in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Franson. Appreciate that. If you had a chance now, read over it a little bit. Do you have any thoughts or any comments to any of those?
Yes, Sheriff Stoltz, thank you. First, I'll touch on the Minnetonka project briefly that he referenced. We went in initially with a planned unit development proposal after working with staff, and they thought it was a good idea, good mix. So did we. After receiving a lot of pushback, we dropped it down by the number of units, and ultimately the city council asked us to conform to the ordinance, which we did. In this case, we're just starting with a conforming plat or subdivision. We're not asking for any variances, as Mr. Franson said. So, as far as this good faith efforts list here, the deeper setbacks from Riverview Road, we will entertain that. We don't want to sacrifice, you know, too much of the backyard for potential homeowners, but we'll see how it lays out and if we can get back...I don't remember if it's 25 or 30 feet of setback from...or is it?
30.
30.
The setback in the front yard is 30 feet. I believe it's 20 in the back.
Okay. So, we'll certainly look at increasing it from 30 in the front if it lays out properly, depending on the home designs. The less density, like we've all mentioned, we're just developing to the ordinance here in the 13,500 square foot lot size. The security lighting, I don't think we install those or our builders do at the time of construction, but we can certainly make note of that with our builders if they do do that, but it might be a personal choice by the eventual homeowners. Gas fireplaces, instead of wood burning, I...we haven't had any builders install wood-burning fireplaces in...at least in my time at Lake West. So, I can't imagine they would, but we can make note of that with the builders. Architectural styles, we, you know, consistent with existing homes is a little tough in some neighborhoods, but we submitted some proposed elevations or conceptual elevations with this...with our submittal here, and that's something like what we're going to try to do. I can certainly show those to Mr. Baker if he hasn't seen them, or talk to him about what he envisions there. The trees, no trees on his property bordering Riverview. I don't think there's any roadwork or anything that would affect his property in conjunction with what we're doing here, and certainly no trees would come down. The minimize noise, dust, and disruption during construction, we, of course, do follow all the rules there, and the city inspection process ensures that. And then the ongoing...earnest and ongoing effort to work with Mr. Baker. I will give him my card and set up a meeting with him to see what we can do there. Mr. Franson mentioned the landscape plan and the conceptual plan you see before you is just that, conceptual. If it would make things better to rearrange some of that and screen toward Riverview Road, we'd be more than happy to do that with the caliber inches that we're putting in there. So...
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Commissioners, any other questions you might have? I mean, basically, we're just taking one and subdividing it into four plots. That's what's being asked.
Yeah, I would just kind of building on your comments and the other gentleman's comments and also Mike's. I mean, it seems to me that you're taking an accommodating approach to this. You're showing willingness to work with them to improve their...the quality of their situation or to keep it high as you move forward with the project. The other side of this is that, of course, when the property was purchased, it was purchased under the conditions of the zoning and city regulations that existed at that time, and so it isn't fair to someone who buys the property to change something, in my opinion, like density, when that's allowable under the rules of the city that existed at the time of purchase of that property. Otherwise, you'd devalue that property to a certain degree. But I was pleased by your willingness to work with them, and I would think maybe some more detail would be important to understand what that means.
Anybody else have any other comments? Any concerns? You can have a seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat of 1.33 acres into four lots based on plan stamped dated November 18th, 2013, and the staff report dated November 22nd, 2013.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations for forwarding your project. Thank you very much. With that being said, the next public hearing is a code amendment. It's towers and antenna screening. This is a continued meeting from the October 25th, 2013 meeting, and the request is to amend city code related to screening brown-based telecommunications equipment in public right-of-way. With that being said, Mr. Franson, are you the one that will be presenting that?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We have the black and blue color version that shows you where we're making modifications to portions of Chapter 11. Without going over that in detail, I'm going to cut right to the chase. The screening solution in the public right-of-way, the best solution is the cabinet. This is what we heard from the commission the last time. And the screening solution on private property is with the building or screening fence architecturally integral to the building on the site or landscaping. That's a direct quote out of Chapter 11 and how we screen all types of mechanical equipment. So, we're staying in the course with how we've done things on private property, and the commission said that was good. And we're charting a new direction in the public right-of-way to take the mechanical equipment and put it in the cabinet so as a very sort of clean and concealed look to it, and it's also a little bit safer than having all that exposed equipment and wires and everything else that goes along with telecommunications.
So, the people that already have, the companies that already have it out, are they grandfathered in, or how is that?
They're grandfathered in. If they come in for a permit to change out equipment, they increase the size of the equipment or add equipment, then we would have the ability to do screening.
Got it. Very good. Does anyone have any comments or concerns?
The only...we were talking about this before the meeting a little bit because I wasn't originally clear, and I think maybe my question was clarified. But basically, this is saying that any mechanical equipment of regular size, if I understand this, does not require screening. It's only mechanical equipment that meets one or more of these characteristics in paragraph K.3, and so it isn't a matter...I mean, you're going to have in the city a large number of pieces of mechanical equipment that would not require screening. And I wonder, do we think this is something, if I understood that correctly, is this 10%, 20%, 30% of all mechanical equipment in the city? Maybe we don't know, but I originally thought we were going to be screening almost all kinds, and that's not the case.
I can tell you that we have not found a piece of mechanical equipment that we would consider self-screening. Every type of heating, ventilation, air conditioning equipment has some irregularity to it in shape because of the way it's designed, and so they've all been screened since the original ordinance went into effect back in 1984. Prior to that, we didn't have a definition of mechanical equipment, and there always was a discussion between the contractor and the developer and the city. It didn't need to be screened because it basically looked good. So, we decided to take the arbitrariness out of it and said, "If it's a regular, if it's not a perfect box, if it doesn't look like a metal cabinet, then you need to do screening." What we found is that most of the developers decide that mechanical equipment is not very attractive, and a lot of the newer buildings they put up, they extend their wall, the parapet wall, so it goes completely around the building. That is less expensive in the long run to maintain than to have to screw under the roof to tie down individual mechanical equipment, or when you're changing things out and you have to add a new screening, it's a more cost-effective way to do it. It also looks better.
Mike, I think you answered this question, but I just want to be sure I understand because that was my original question. If you look at paragraph 4, K.3...
Yes.
Any piece of mechanical equipment had to be...had to fit one or more of those characteristics in paragraph 3 there. Apparently, there's no such thing as a piece of a mechanical equipment that's regular in size. Like you're saying, everything would be irregular. I'm not sure I understand that, but that's fine. Because I thought maybe there was a category of things that could be regular in size and therefore not fit one or more of those K.3 characteristics.
If someone came out with a product like that, that looked like just a rectangular box, didn't have fans or belts or vents or stacks coming out of them, we'd be the first to say it's not required to be screened because it's basically a self-screening unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Frank. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing that this is an open public hearing, is anyone out in the audience? Judy, have anything for us? Are you sure? All right. Very good. You are technically in the audience tonight. All right. With that being said...
You're technically part of the audience.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, move...
Mr. Chair, move to recommend approval of the amendment to city code related to screening of ground-based telecommunications equipment. The staff report dated November 22nd, 2013.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, city staff, you can move forward with your project. With that being said, planners' reports. Julie and/or Mike, I guess.
I actually do. I was trying to check my calendar to tell you when the next planning commission meeting date was, but I'm not.
December 9th.
Not quite quick enough on this.
December 9th.
Actually, the next meeting that we will actually have a meeting, because December 9th is going to be canceled.
Oh.
Because we don't have any public hearings.
I promised to write it down this time.
The second meeting, the 22nd, is during Christmas week, and we've never held public hearings during Christmas week. So the second Monday in January will be your first meeting next year.
Okay, so none in December?
Right.
That's a short answer. Okay. All right. Anything else from planners?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Members' reports?
I don't have anything either.
Nothing new?
Any questions from the great presentation you guys had? I don't have anything to add to that.
No, I think we're good.
The only question, I don't have a question, I have a, I have a reflection, having read through the minutes again, how many crossings we have.
Yeah, we do.
We have a lot of crossings. And sort of like, I feel like when all this is said and done, which is going to be a long way down the road, there are going to be a lot of things that we're going to have as a city, you know, on our hands, and it's a big deal. It's much more extensive than I had thought it to be, even with all of the great reporting you've done and participation.
It's going to change the character of certain parts of the city.
We're going with more urban.
Yeah, very much so.
And some of you may not have heard this, but we were surprised, I think it's fair to say, last time when I asked, "How many trains a day are we anticipating?" And it was 200.
Yeah.
So I, that, that, that's a lot of trains during a day.
I drive that area a lot with all the, where all the crossings are going to be.
Yeah.
And it's really going to make it look different.
I agree. Okay, anything else? First, members' reports? Continuing business? Any new business? Okay, now I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.